To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To open this meeting. Amy.
My name is Amy Swallow. I'm here on behalf of the Park Heritage Post-Form Committee. We parked cars in the new lot last year and we were coming to request permission to do so again for the two days of the festival.
Is that motion?
I'm in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Our vote in favor? That was pretty easy, wasn't it? Sandy, you're up. I will tell you, before you start, I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna change our mind on anything, but you're more than welcome to speak for a few minutes, so.
Well, I just came for good news hopefully.
Well, I mean, we, we, um, I mean, we've got a couple of people interested in that place. And, um, our appraisals are a little, uh, I mean, we're getting under the gun on them, so, um, we're probably gonna move forward unless you guys want to discuss it more.
How long 'til you'll start taking the bids?
I, I, I have no idea. I mean, like I said, you guys could be in there for the, for the festival, for sure. I don't think anything's gonna happen that soon.
How, what would be like our cutoff date to have things moved out of there?
I have no idea. I mean, until we have, you know, a closing date and stuff like that, we won't, we won't know anything. I mean, I mean, once it starts to sell, I mean, obviously, things will start happening, you'll, you'll see. You know, we'll, we'll be talking about it in meetings and everything else, so. But I'm sure you'll, you'll have a few, a few weeks or so to get in and out.
As for festival, you mean?
I would imagine, yes. I don't, like I said, I don't foresee anything happening that soon. I mean, we're, what, two weeks? Two weeks out of festival, three weeks out of festival?
No, like four.
We just have no idea where, where to go with the shed and how to move it and what it costs.
Have you talked to anybody from the county?
Not yet, because I was waiting to vote. Vote, yeah, they would work with us here. So, then the other thing, um, one, so you don't have a definite date, you have to be out by a certain definite date.
Not at this point in time, no.
You'll make sure if anybody putting in a sealed bid, we know those items belong to us and that we can move them. Okay, so, um, the other thing I want to bring to your attention, I forgot last time, was the, uh, when you walk in the back door, the leaking roof on the left is leaking again, it's running down the wall, we waited till it's repaired. Man it over, now you can see it's coming down the wall. So, I don't know if it's something we need to post to the next board.
Cut it flat.
Or just walk, we might look at some work this way.
Well, Sean's the one that repaired it, I'll call him. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
If anything changes, please let us know soon.
Do what?
If anything changes, if your mind changes, if you decide to work with the Park County Senior Citizens, let us know.
It'll all be in a meeting. I mean, whatever, whatever happens, it'll be, obviously, be in a public meeting, so.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh. Brandy, you ready?
Uh, I have some claims here for $292, $270, and $51, please.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All favor.
Aye.
I have, um, these are a couple batches we've had for quite a while on the bill adjustments, so, a separate one for two, uh, two, 28, 49, 75, and then I do have some claims here of a total of $5,169.09. There were a couple, um, we had a business that had a pretty huge water leak. Still had a couple of pool fills. And, I know the courthouse, they actually had a big, pretty big irrigation system leak as well.
So what were the additional claims, Brandy?
There's just two batches, 'cause we have all of them ready to go, and then there's another, two separate totals.
Oh.
I mean, is that a second too?
Yeah.
Okay, all favor.
Aye.
Then I got these a little late, but they're next for September 3rd.
Make a motion to approve, second.
All favor.
Aye.
Well, good. Are you ready, Bill?
Ready. Hey, first thing is the, uh, we're getting ready to move into the Bridge Festival, and we usually have extra coverage come out, uh, which means paying the guys overtime. Uh, we'd like to be able to, uh, use part-time, run out of your time funds, uh, to pay these guys to work, uh, their shifts. Uh, we have more, we have a little bit of extra in part-time that we've not used, and we'd like to just, uh, be able to draw money out of those funds once the funds and overtime are depleted. So I don't believe there needs to be any transfer of anything, just permission to use.
Make that motion.
A second.
All favor.
Uh, the crossing guard has turned in her resignation. Her last day will be the 31st of October.
Here we go again.
Is that the one, uh?
On 36.
On 36?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one prior to her, uh, putting in her last minute application, I'd recommended that we, uh, no longer man that one, and that we have the kids cross at the, uh, Market and Ohio. Because we are not having a lot of kids crossing there.
You know what bothers me? So many of them cross at Market, yeah, at Market in Ohio, and it's busy there, and the kids run.
I know at Market, at least, there's the stop.
Yeah, Michigan, they cross it.
Most of them are crossing at Michigan and College.
Yes.
Uh, so we're really paying somebody to sit there to get 10 kids to cross the street a lot of times, if that. And I feel like we get, if the crossing guard calls and says we're there to man it, but there are days where we just cannot man it because we're on a call.
But don't we recommend they cross here?
We would recommend they cross Market Street.
Crossing line? So we're just not gonna rehire?
That would be my recommendation, is to.
And just send the letters like we.
I suppose we need a motion on that, do we?
Show moved, second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the PD, they're, I guess there was some water problems, had to have the water shut off, and they've repaired the water. They are stretching the wire probably as we speak, to get the lights and stuff installed. They've, I think, got most of their prep work and everything done, they're waiting on the doors to get here. But they're in there working.
You, you still hope to be in there by festival?
Hope to be. Also, we brought up last time about the, uh, where we're gonna do our parking for the square. And I would just like to bring your attention that we probably need to paint that yellow, white, and any of the designs, or, uh, we can stencil police parking on those, on that circular area for us to park. Uh, and that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Bill. Uh, you and Doug wanna get together on that, or?
We already talked about it, it's whatever you guys, if you're all right with it, we can get it painted white. I don't know about the stencil, that might not look too good, either of the signs, but.
The signs would be just as good as stencils would.
I'm just being truthful.
Not fun.
Might say please, who knows? Tony did.
You got the floor, so go ahead.
I, I don't have a whole lot, just, uh, Case Construction is back in town, there was a few places that, uh, they didn't get, uh, repaired that B and T done, so they are, well, I take that back, they were today, will be here in a week or so. Uh, the three-phase and pole replacement, Anderson Green that burned up, all that has been replaced and they're finished with that. Transfer has been made, so we're done with that project.
Was that the one that caused the power outage? Do we know it caused the power outage?
No.
No, that was, the last one we had is due, and I, I do have an email, but I haven't bring it on. They're gonna have to come in and change out some stuff, but we'll still be in power by the end of it. So the 120 water, we're at 150 or less on it, and then to be completed, so we're, we got plenty of time, it'll, not worry about if. Um, I met with Jason, uh, about the tower, about the old building, he's gonna work something up and present it, I believe I said, send it to Brandy.
That's Verizon.
Yeah, so.
Any more discussion about compensation?
That's, well, that was the other one, but this is a different.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that any more can tell us what they're at, and we had some suggestions out there, so, but before they will present a contract.
Okay, they want a site.
Yeah.
So they pick two or three out where they like, and everything, and then, um, and for the, uh, festival, just I'll let you know, the event boxes, uh, had a lot of trouble with plugs and stuff finding it. So, uh, Brett and I sat down and ordered, uh, cords and ends and everything, and we'll supply them, then we'll collect them all back. And, uh, we'll keep them in our building, and that way if anybody else wants to do something on Market Street or whatever, they won't have to purchase everything. We'll, we can come up with it, we just wanna loan that kinda stuff out, do we, you know, figure, we wanna rent it to events, or however we wanna do it. So we did go ahead and purchase that, and it was around $1,700 for all that, and everything, and it'll, it's in, we've got it today. So, uh, so we did decide to do that. And like I said, um, B and T will be in, um, starting tomorrow, they're gonna get the valves in at the water plant. They'll be in here, more in the, uh, power line for the Market Street job. The skater system is being delivered, uh, so.
Really?
Yeah, he called day and said it's on its way.
Nice.
Uh, and then once that's all done, and then I believe next week, Cookway will be in to start painting sandblasting and all that. So the, the end of the water project is really close now.
Near?
Yes. Yeah, so. And the only other thing I've got is, uh, John Montgomery stopped me the other day, and he is getting back into tree trimming, and he would like, he made a proposal to me to present to you guys. He'd like some advertisement, and one thing he thought for advertisement was he has a new crane that he can lift a lot, lift over and not get in it. He would like to cut the tree out of Memory Garden that we need out, he can reach over without driving through, lift it out free of charge, just for the advertisement and good faith with the town. The town guys will have to chip it and haul it off, but we would if we cut it anyway, so. He's insured, I dropped the insurance paper off to, uh, Nick, so.
Well, um, whoa, whoa, what you? I'd like your input on this.
Well, yes. He's insured, but, I mean, you don't typically take the route of endorsement or advertising or things for people you use. I mean, if you wanna use them, that's one thing, but it's not really an advertising thing. We don't typically do that. Actually, we're not supposed to, we're supposed to get bids and get different things, and. I did look at the insurance, they had a $1 million umbrella policy and half a million, I think, per current, so. So insurance-wise, he's fine if you want to use him, but as far as advertising.
Well, I think his advertising meant basically what people see him working.
Right.
'Cause he started, he was not gonna advert, really advertise anything, but.
Yeah.
But it was an offer, he wasn't gonna charge us nothing, we just cleaned it up.
So is it worth a donation to him?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, I mean, he's not asking to be paid, I mean, so it'd be voluntary work, I guess we could have a voluntary work. Him sign off on, like, a whole harmless for doing voluntary work, I suppose. I mean, the county's done that before, when people forked around the covered bridges and things like that, but, yeah, we generally don't accept, like, it's not something we've ever done, where we just use one contract to do things, so. So.
If it is voluntary, you might wanna check with our insurance carriers.
That too, yeah.
Usually there's a form that they sign as a volunteer, in case something does happen, you've always got insurance, just to cover.
Well, yeah, right, and, and that's similar, I was thinking, but, then, I mean, it still does leave liability there as far as if he's hurt while he's doing it, so. So I guess it's kinda up to you if you wanna allow volunteer work that way or not, but. Is there a difference between volunteering and donation, as far as legal? No, I mean, they're still gonna have him sign the same form regardless. He's not being paid compensation, and the, the reason for doing the form is acknowledgement that you've authorized him to do it, but it also has certain requirements that the insurance will want in place.
I just don't know if that's something we oughta get into, kinda makes me.
It's not high enough to do a bid. I would think for one tree, you're not gonna open up for bids.
I mean, is that not something we can do for ourselves, I guess would be my question.
Yeah, with us, we have to back in here, we have to be super dry or frozen, it was just something, he, he stopped me, and he's got this crane that he put the flag on. He can reach over there, lift it to an empty lot, and we can chip it up.
But yeah, you definitely wanna run that through insurance before you allow anybody to do that kinda thing.
What's everybody think?
I'm for it, but he's my cousin, so I probably should stay away from him.
Well, so you're abstaining from anybody?
Yes, abstaining from anyone.
Yes. If I wanna make a motion on this?
He cut a couple of trees down the other Saturday for loads over there on Westwood Dennis, and he and her, he and her cut a couple of them for him.
I understand you allow that, I mean, you know, if it's something that you allow, I think you need to talk to insurance brokers to let.
Well, yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
This is the circumstance here and what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
I mean, we can take one for two weeks.
Is there anything like, uh, the only thing I would see is that down the road, like, people would be able to say, hey, he gave you three steps, that's why he's getting this job, and that.
Yeah, it opens up candidates, that, that, you, you, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of issues there, what do you do? Nice of him, but, uh, how, how, how do you handle it? People make accusations down the road because of that, and, and, and what do you do?
I generally side on the side of that makes you feel funny, you ought not to do it, even if you can do it. I mean, that's not a legal standard by any means.
No, but it's kind of a.
If your spidey senses tingle, you should usually say no.
I mean, we can.
Donation, we have a donation, like, fund, don't we? So if he wanted to donate the funds that he earned from cutting the tree down, if we decided we wanted to do it, he could. There's a, there's a forever fund in the cemetery that it could go into.
But I'm, I'm certain your insurance company will want something signed by him before agreeing to insure it, since he's not an employee of the town, and he's not contracted with the town in any way.
When does the cemetery board meet again? Monday, Monday? I mean, you guys wanna discuss, I mean, if they.
Well, we would defer to the town board, I mean, there's two of the three of us here, we would defer back to the town.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you guys, I mean, cemetery is your.
We'd like to say it gone, of course, but, yeah, you guys, you guys are the, uh, all fighters, so.
But without a motion, it's dead anyway, so.
So are we moving on from it?
I'm not making a motion.
I guess we're moving on, David.
All right, we're moving on from it.
Thank him for his offer. Thank him for his honor.
Okay.
You wanna talk about any projects, Brandy?
Um, unless anybody has any questions, I mean, I think I can, go ahead.
Well, okay, well, I, I know we have a lot in play in two community crossing grants, we have a Stark one, and then we have the other three streets, and we're working on the west end of Anderson, highly unlikely we'll get stormwater structures in. But, but have you had time to reach out to, to Milestone and get any feedback on, on, about doing the other streets?
Yes, and my comment with that is gonna kinda coincide with maybe what Luke's conversation with the progress being made on Anderson Street. I guess setting Anderson Street aside, um, Milestone is good with coming in and doing Walton Howard, Stark, all the milling and doing the curb and everything that Stark Street needs, um, right after festival.
Okay.
So if everybody is good with, with that, weather is, you know, good.
That'd be great.
That's their plan. Milestone told me today that they were planning on coming in October 4th to do the concrete and the curbs on Anderson Street.
Yep.
So that may have a, any issues with utilities?
John, just an hour ago, uh, my concern was with Center Point not out of the way yet, obviously we can't put storm structures in, they're directly on top of them, uh, I talked to John, said if they try to start the 26th of this month, he's confident that they can get asphalt in, given as, we can't predict the weather, you know, if it gets cold, asphalt shuts down. So there's a small chance that they get all the curving in, all the structures in, they go to put asphalt down, it's too cold. Be not ideal, we would end up with gravel through the winter, and we would have to pave it in spring.
Oh, have mercy.
That would be the worst option. Option B, we wait until spring and start the project, is an optimal. But he is confident that if they start the 26th of this month, they can get everything done in time.
Who is that?
That's John Stacks, the Milestone contractor.
Milestone. So what was Center Point, Center Point, they, they ran a line today to Gambianni, they still have work there down Burnham Lane.
If they get Gambianni service in, they can start the storm structures on Rockville Road.
Yep.
Go, go west, turn north, and then back, back east on Anderson. As far as I know, I think they're to a point, I didn't, I didn't check today, but I think they still have to put about 500 feet of two-inch in, in Anderson Street, and then they could kill on the six-inch steel.
They didn't give me the four, was the date. The only reason I've been holding on on letting them start is I don't want those contractors to get in here, start on that south portion, and then have to demobilize and send you guys a bill for mobilization, demobilization, the last thing I want to happen.
Right.
They should knock this down pretty fast. That's why I think if they start the 26th, uh, Center Point's out before, I think it was an eight-day buffer for that entire south and north-south portion.
Okay.
I think that should timeout, you know, within a day or two. But he said he was confident that we can get it done this year, so.
Okay.
Based on the conversation Brandy had of Warren, they're acting like they're gonna run asphalt plants until the end of October, beginning of November.
He said after festival for those streets, you know, latest, and they had no problems with that.
I don't wanna make that call, 'cause I can't predict the weather, but Milestone's saying it, I'll take the word on it, but.
Well, what's the weather look like out past 60th and October?
Temperatures don't look too bad, but, I mean, it's gonna start raining at some point, I know we're in a drought now, but.
Yeah.
When it starts, it's probably gonna not stop. The way it usually goes.
Just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, we are approaching that cold snap.
Well, if we can at least get the other streets done big.
Yeah.
Good.
Absolutely.
And they can do those right after the festival.
That's what he told me today.
I just want you to know there's a chance we end up with gravel through the winter, it's thin, but.
So then as far as South Market, where, where they've got, they've got one more layer to put on as far as blacktop it looks on.
At least one.
Yeah. That's close.
Yeah, I've looked at it the last couple days. They should probably, did they get all the bricks done from the intersection?
Pretty close, I think.
I mean, there's a short a little bit, but.
Yeah. But I, I've talked to the paving and, um, to the engineer, and that, there's no, there's no worries about deadlines, so we're not concerned.
They're not worried, right?
Nope.
So we're not worried. Yeah, three weeks and Fridays at festival.
Uh, parking lot, they should, um, uh, they're planning on starting the lights meeting there the first week of October, and they'll knock that out in no time to, you know, weather permitting too as well, and that's their plan right now. They wanted to get it done prior to festival, but watching the weather too, so they'll have that finished, if weather permits, that'll be finished prior to festival as well. And then the, uh, Oak Grove Grant, that was kind of the follow-up of what you had for B and T and what was left.
Same, I just talked up for this, sounds like they're gonna be wrapped up, uh, I'll have payout nine to you in the morning, that way for next meeting, get it built out.
Okay.
And then payout ten should be the final.
That's it, isn't it? Roy, you got anything?
Yeah, sure.
Fire, you have a little business?
Well, we, we, it's that time of the year, the budget, uh, thank Bill for getting out your, your budget, uh, data. We got fire, uh, for a while now, um, so, yeah, what do you need to be thinking about, when do we wanna?
After festival.
After festival? Well, okay, yeah, you're, you're, you're getting real busy, aren't you? Well, our first meeting after the fest, town board meeting's 21st, so I, I suppose we, that's about a month out, but we, we, uh, need to start thinking about it.
We can meet before that.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want you upset. I, I, I don't know, we, we should probably try to have at least one meeting before that and go over what we do have, um.
Just not on a Monday.
Not on a Monday?
Maybe a Wednesday.
Good.
Why make it a Monday?
Well, yeah, there's always so many Mondays in a month, and I, um, I don't know.
Somebody's got a taste of the Mondays.
Yeah, yeah, uh, where are we? We are here 16th.
We take the Monday.
Yeah. I mean, what you, anybody's got any thoughts, comments, suggestions? Do Mondays work best for most people or not? I mean, you're the one that has kinda routines.
Only got like five days off in October, so.
Okay, so October's not good at all, really.
Yeah, but hopefully after 6 o'clock, but, um, uh, you just pick a day, I'll be there.
Well, we wanna do it in October, we, we have, we have one more Monday, it's a lucky month, we have five Mondays in September.
That's true, let's just fill them all right up.
I mean, we could just get together two weeks from tonight, not get into October, 'cause everybody gets really busy in October, it sounds like. I know you do, I do, Chris is gonna be, uh.
Just pick a day, fire.
Okay, okay.
Moving on from that, I'm serious.
Well, let's just do the 30th of September, and you get to at least talk about it some, that's two weeks from tonight.
What time, 5 o'clock?
Is 5 good?
Sure.
Okay.
Will we maybe be in the other building?
Uh, we shouldn't be, but I'll.
We'll figure that out.
Should.
Yeah, that's my day.
Okay.
Who knows? Is that all the old business you have?
That, that's all I got, I didn't bring anything else tonight.
Is there any new business? Okay, any other comment?
I guess I should have been under new business, I'm stepping down from the park board effective.
I'm just saying hello to everybody.
Okay.
We moved, my wife and I moved into town, uh, worked in town five years ago. Just now, since I retired, I got time to see, have a little development work, and I'm interested in. But I've seen so far, everybody's pretty efficient, knows what's going on, doing a good job, boy.
Well, thank you.
So we just wanted, I just wanted to be in once in a while.
You're always welcome.
Welcome everybody, and, and.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Now, what do you say, Monster?
I'm stepping down from the park board.
You are?
Effective today.
Okay.
So the board council can place somebody in my seat for the town board.
You're already on there, you're already on there.
Yeah, they're already on there.
So, Nick's not.
You can't place me on there.
Right.
I, I know Michelle Foner would like to be on there, so.
Okay, that's, that's.
And she lives in town?
She says she does, yours.
Unless she, maybe not for all, she's over off of Bridge and Street. Maybe not for long.
Oh.
So, I guess that was my motion to make, so.
Kevin says she may be moving soon.
They're looking for a house, in town or in the.
I guess if she finds a house out of town, we can find somebody else at that point, so.
So why, each year, you make a motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'll second it. Who's this gal, Michelle?
She works at All Sop, she's big in Main Street.
She did the thing at the park.
Okay.
She's on Main Street, president of the Better Business Bureau.
I didn't even know we had one.
I didn't either, but...
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kevin?
I just want to give kind of a report, most of the deal with Main Street is the trashcans came in, thanks to Doug, his crew, they're cutting together right now, we've got them all marked out where they're going to go around the square, we spent Saturday moving the benches around and make sure they're, they're marked and left on all that stuff for the festival. We got four new planters, and thank God, from Randy Azure, who corrected a big boo on my part.
Let's not get carried away.
They got a return for three, they got it refunded, and got the new one for more than half that with no shipping or tax, it'll be placed tomorrow on the west side of the square. The four remaining garbage cans on the square are, we'll be going to the cemetery, and then at the cemetery board meeting, we're going to ask for four more wire cans down there, otherwise we're rocking and rolling, and we really appreciate the help that Doug and his crew, and Randy and her girls have really done a, a magnificent job for all of us.
Thank you. I misspoke, it's the Chamber of Commerce, but...
Yeah, I, I just want to, you know, note that they, they got that tree out the day after last meeting there on Market Street, a tulip tree, I see the stump's still there, what's our plan on that stump?
They would not remove it, we're going to have to grind it.
Have to what, grind it?
Yeah, yeah, they will, they wouldn't remove it because of the curb being there, they didn't want the liability of busting that curb.
Well, have we got that set up?
No, I'm assuming once they, I mean, it won't be in their way while they're doing it, it shouldn't take much to, we'll, we'll get that one on the front of our skid steer like we always do, and take it down.
Okay.
But I tried to get them to, but their boss is afraid that, you know, if something come up and got the curb, that they'd be replacing the curb.
Right.
So...
Well, the only other thing I have is, this Friday, we are going to enter the time capsule again. Doug, what time is that event?
Probably just 1:00.
1:00. So, if you can make it, come down and watch them bury the time capsule, some of you may still be here when they dig it up, so...
That's my goal.
Okay.
Look what you brought.
People living here might be.
Well, yeah, there's a few.
At the park.
Same, Luke's still...
Yeah.
Yeah, Luke.
Luke, right, yeah, yeah.
Maybe in.
Maybe in.
I think he can, tomorrow, almost 9:00. You will be here. They moved that sale there. Yeah, I don't know.
Like 40 years, like, is that okay?
Yeah, 40 years to the front, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody's got any?
Speaking of the time capsule, I'll go ahead and mention, I'll, I'll put some notifications out there, but anybody that still wants to put something in the time capsule, I'd like to have that by 4 o'clock on Wednesday at the office, so they're going to pick all those items up and get that sealed up and ready for Friday, so...
So there you go, you got one last chance.
Just an FYI, Dave, Park County Commissioner's put into effect a burn ban today, so, as you guys are asked by 100 people over next week, there's no overturning.
Thank you, Luke.
You're welcome.
All righty, well, I'd entertain another German.
So, my, thanks.
All in favor?
Thanks.
30 minutes.